If everyone's ready, please, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, and we have all of our commissioners present tonight. And that takes us to the first order business, the adoption of the agenda. If I can have a motion to adopt or any changes.
I so moved.
A second.
All righty. Any discussion, or all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that takes us to the minutes. If anyone has any changes or a motion in regards to the minutes.
I had one suggestion. Let me get it up here. The place on the... Yes, this has to do with the Rummel Tourist Home. Page two, page three. The second-to-last paragraph before public comment. Mr. Atkins recommended denial. I just suggest that we say, Mr. Atkins moved to recommend denial of the application due to, just to keep the process. We then say we, the motion was seconded and approved, but I just feel like that would tighten it up a little.
Okay, that sounds like a motion to adopt the minutes with that change.
Yes, please.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Steph. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you, Brian. Abstention, I'm guessing because you weren't here.
Yeah.
All right, that takes us to the first item, the special exception 24-03-01, the Carton Tourist Home. Ms. Summers, if you would cue that up for us, please.
Thank you. This property is located at 437 Rolling Road, Rolling Road in Hawthorne, Stonewall Hawthorne District. The property is agricultural and it is 10.11 acres in size. The applicant wishes to use the existing home as a three-bedroom tourist home. The Health Department commented that their records indicated that the property has a permit effective in '05 to operate a sewage disposal system having a capacity of 450 gallons per day of three-bedroom, six-person occupancy with a thousand-plus gallon septic tank. The well records indicated that the well has an 80-gallon per-minute yield. The septic tank was recently, in 2000, pumped out and it's on schedule to be pumped out again next year, 2025. VDOT had no objections to the request. Staff would recommend the following conditions: a maximum of three bedrooms, six guests, food service to be offered to renters, that the permit terminated upon sale or transfer of the property, and that the property may not be subleased from it by their party. Are you sure the top share?
Thank you, Ms. Summers. And the owners are present this evening. Did y'all want to say anything at this time, or?
Just thank you all for your time. I appreciate it and we're happy to answer any questions.
That sounds good, stay tuned. At this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the Carton Tourist Home. If anyone is here to speak on this matter, please come to the microphone and address your comments to the commission. And the public hearing on this item is open. There's no one here to speak on this agenda item. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing in turn to my fellow commissioners. So it's Stonewall Hawthorne. Gary, if you would care to go first.
There's one mistake here.
Yes, sir.
On agency comments.
Yes, sir.
So the permit for the septic was 2005, and then we say it was pumped five years before it was installed, and then it's going to be pumped again in 25 years. So that tells me that it was pumped in 2020.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Good math. Good riddance.
Thank you, Al. No time machines involved in this application.
I don't know that I can follow that one. I will, I will just add, I just, I'm curious. It looks like this would meet our two-year standard, but is that even relevant yet?
This one, that two-year, having to own it for two years doesn't go into effect until July. So this would not, that would not apply to this application.
And the, and, sorry again, but the 10 acres is the minimum lot size for this zone.
Correct, so they met that requirement.
Yeah. I would just say that I did drove, drive out there. It's a lovely place, far back in the woods. Hard to imagine anybody who finds it bothering anybody. So, you know, I think it's a good use. But I'm glad to hear from others.
Yeah, I went up there too. The plantings are really amazing. And the bottle tree and everything is great. I thought somebody would be lucky to get to rent that place. Anyway, it looked like you guys were really taking care of it. And it is extremely quiet. It was so nice to have the roles in the house. We rarely get this. Thank you.
I went back there as well, and I understand, congratulations, because it was finalized the fourth. I called the attorney to make sure, because I knew it said you had the, basically the power attorney to do it or whatever. So I did call the attorney, and he said you had the, I guess, the 4th of April. So congratulations. Beautiful place. My only concern, I know you talked about up to eight vehicles, parking up to eight vehicles over. And I mean, I know it's a state road, but that is, that's, that is, as Rat Paney goes, that is not one of the easier roads to traverse. I mean, somebody has to basically get over. But that would be my only concern, because it is beautiful up there.
Yes, but when you respond, please use the microphone. So we have it on the record.
Hi, Alyssa Carton, thank you so much. I'm so happy that you all were able to go and see that. So the eight vehicles was when we thought it was four-bedroom, eight people. And then we, because that's how it was listed when our good friend purchased it. It was listed as a four-bedroom, so that's what we put. Then when we found out from the Health Department that it was, the septic was good for three-bedrooms, six people, we didn't change, we didn't get the app back to change it. So we'll, you know, make sure.
I did have one other question. Do you have, and I was a little confused.
Sure.
Do you have an additional house close to that, or?
We do not.
Okay, all right.
We do not. One house on the property. I live in Arlington. Our good friends, Dr. David Tufts and his wife, Tamar, is outside with the dogs. We will, are going to use it as much as we possibly can. So it's not going to, it's not just a short-term rental. It's more, that will probably be much more sporadic, but we figured it was better to get in the application than not. We're very excited to be there. The original owners, Sally and Jack Price, did all of that. And so we're very grateful to them. And we actually heard from Brian, who you spoke with. They, he's been in touch with them for some of the paperwork that we needed. And they moved to Georgia, and they were excited to hear about the possibility of it being a short-term rental because they said they would love to come back and see how it is and visit their plantings. And so that was exciting, that was exciting.
Well, he had a lot of good things to say about you, which usually you know an attorney, but anyway.
Thank you.
While you're at the microphone, if I may, what are your plans for, like, do you have a local point of contact? Or what's the, what's the intention with respect to calls for concerns from either renters or neighbors?
Absolutely right, great question. So the Tufts met Travis. I'm not going to remember his last name, but we have a shared property line with Travis. And Dave, I don't know if you want to say, or he, I think he has a large machine mechanic background, and we're hoping to talk to him about being. He seemed pretty open, right, to maybe helping us out and said that he used to plow for the prices, and he'd be willing to do that for us. There was also a gentleman at the, at the board meeting we came to the first time who said that he did some maintenance for some local short-term rentals. So we're going to start hitting up people in the, in the local area. I'm confident that I can get here from Fairfax, George Mason campus, watching the speed limit pretty quickly. But we're, we're an all-hands-on-deck kind of group, and we'll use our resources and would appreciate any suggestions that anybody has.
Yeah, I, I think that it generally endears folks to their neighbors if they have on-site contacts or, you know, within five, 10 minutes. So if something does go wrong, that someone can get on the scene pretty quickly.
Absolutely, that's our, that's our priority.
That would be great.
Figuring that out, yeah.
Does you have anything else here?
No, in fact, I think I might have stolen the mic from somebody else.
Can I go?
Yes, sir.
So let me just understand, who's the applicants?
Myself and my husband, Gary Carton, and then our good friends, David and Tamar Tufts. We purchased the house together. We've been friends for 30-plus years, and the Tufts just retired after living in Winchester.
So we have, in our package, we have a deed from 2022.
Lori Bean.
Yeah. So from conversation here, I guess there's been a new deed recorded in the last month or two.
That's correct. April 4th was the day we closed on the house. And Lori Bean was our neighbor in Arlington, Virginia, and who sadly passed away last spring.
Just that our report here still is Lori Bean as the other.
Yes, and that's, Mr. Sisk talked to her estate, executor of the estate today, to make sure it was okay with.
Yes, the reaction we take should reflect that there's a different property under now.
Yes.
Yes, please, thank you.
Yes, Michelle, if we could get that added to the packet for the board supervisors, that would be great.
I've already noted that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I think you're, I think you're headed towards a favorable outcome tonight. So what I'm going to ask you to do is to educate us a little bit. We speculate all the time on B&Bs and what happens on Airbnb's and things like this. So, and we'd like to understand what's really going on out there.
Sure.
So we have the, I have the benefit here of the deeds from 2002, 2022, shows a consideration here of $860,000. And I could go to the courthouse tomorrow and look it up.
Sure.
What the recent consideration.
Sure.
What was the consideration recently?
Eight seventy-five.
Okay, so you're here pretty quickly thereafter. So how does this ability to do the Airbnb play into your decision to do this? Because we talk about that all the time in that we say people potentially come out here and do it, and then we other, we think, maybe people think it might be part of the plan, and then, you know, different things. So you're right here pretty quickly. Tell us, tell us your mentality to do this.
Sure, absolutely. So I want to be sensitive to people's time, but I want to answer your question. Our longtime neighbor in Arlington, Lori Bean, purchased this property after her husband of 25 years passed away from MS. This was one of their favorite places to come. She purchased that property, then got sick very quickly and died last spring. I found out in January, when Brian, the executor of her estate, we were helping him clear everything out of her Arlington home, and I, the last night before he was leaving, I said, is this goodbye, are you heading back to Michigan? And he said, actually, I'm going to swing by Lori's Sperryville place just to check on it. And I was still like, I just said out of the blue, tell me more about that. And he told me how it was her favorite place and their favorite place. And, you know, he said, we were trying to figure out a way to keep it, but we just can't. She, she had, had left her, that home and her Arlington home to some kids in the neighborhood, but they weren't connected with two different families. So they couldn't really make it work to keep it. And so I asked if we could come and see it. I knew that the Tufts love the Shenandoah area after living in Winchester for 25 years. My husband and I came out to see it two days later, fell in love with it. I mean, it's hard not to fall in love with. I invite you all to come up. I'm going to go there tonight and be there for a few days. And so we, my husband and I both work where he's a nonprofit. I work in education. We're not close to being able to retire, so we knew we couldn't do it alone. We've been good friends with the Tufts for a long time and asked if they were interested, and they said they were. And so, yeah.
So if, if it wasn't the ability to do an Airbnb, would you have bought it?
Probably not, I, I don't know. Probably, it would have been really tough. It would have been tough.
So, so that was the item that crossed it over to a purchase decision.
It did, and, and we found out then, you know, a couple days later, after reading the paper, actually at the Black Twig, that you all were, you know, recommending the two-year residency requirement. And we were like, oh, no, oh, no. But Brian, the executor of the state, said, look, if that goes through, I'm not going to hold you to anything. Like, everyone wanted it to work. Everyone in the neighborhood wanted it to work. Brian wanted it to work. So he's, you know, he said, if, if, if you're not going to be able to do that, we'll, I'll let you out of the contract. We'll give you your deposit back. Because they were waiting to the spring to list it because they wanted it to look as beautiful as it could. So it was just really lucky that it kind of all came together. We all think Lori is, was sort of managing that for us all.
Yeah, help us to understand the economics of it. So what's a night, a night or two rental? What's your passion?
I don't know yet.
You've got to know if you made your decision to buy based upon Airbnb.
Well, I'll tell you this. I do have an Excel spreadsheet of the comps in the area, but I'm a big fan of not jinxing things.
What's the range?
Uh, well, it depends on the time of year, but I would say between 200 and, well, for a three-bedroom, I originally did the comps based on a four-bedroom. 200 to 400 a night in the fall is, is the approximate. Does that sound right? Yeah, and I think 220 cleaning is what most people charge. We're very dog-friendly, so we'll probably, we'll, we'll definitely allow people to bring their dogs, keep them on leash.
To the education.
You're, you're very welcome. Great questions, sure, thank you.
I guess my only question was, and it's a beautiful property, and obviously, anyone would be delighted to spend time in such a beautiful place, such a remote atmosphere, far removed from the main roads. But, I mean, we do have this type-two road standard embedded in our approval process, and I did wonder if folks had looked at, if there had been a look at that road. The rolling road on the way up to there is, is very narrow.
That is a secondary road.
Okay, so it meets, so it meets the standard. Okay.
Is it a state road, would it all apply?
Yeah, we don't apply those standards.
Well, I just, I just know that, you know, as narrow as it was and streams right there, I just hope if there's a way to alert people when they come out, to stay there, to be sensitive to locals and to, you know, be gentle with the speed limit.
Absolutely.
And there's a blind turn on that road. And I grew up driving on country roads. So I hope people will be sensitive to that and look out for the other guy.
Absolutely, and we've noticed a lot of traffic because the trailhead is right past our driveway. So Dave was saying even a couple days ago, there were five or six cars parked up on that road, so.
Yeah, I was probably one of them for a few minutes. It was a beautiful day on Sunday, and I pulled over.
We feel very, very lucky that this has all happened, and it's clearly a community that cares, which is important to us, so.
Sounds good. Sounds like we have a consensus of the commission.
I move that we recommend approval of special exception 24-03-01 with the conditions as recommended, including confirmation of indication of the, of the ownership that's yet to take place, has taken place. Just confirming that. And we want to limit it to six cars, given that the reduction from, from four bedrooms? I guess there is no, what were you referring to? Sorry, I'm in the middle of a motion, but I didn't see anything with respect to cars. Is that in the application itself? Seems like there's enough parking for more.
It's in the, it's in their house rules.
Okay, it's in their house rules. I'll just leave my motion as it stands with no further consideration of cars. So my motion is to recommend approval with the conditions recommended by the zoning administrator and confirmation of the ownership change.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think that we need to contact VDOT. Ask them to apply some tender loving care to Rolling Road as, as well as some other roads, secondary roads in that kind of town.
That is a point well taken. And it did occur to me that, when I was out there, that that was one of the rougher roads that I was on. They're probably secondary only to that tourist home we, application we had down off Holland last year. That one was pretty rough, too.
We also wish to have some, need some tender loving care on Woodward Road.
I will reach out to Mr. Ness, but I, I would personally like to see the cars limited to six. I think, I don't know why you would have eight cars for six people.
Well, I would be happy to amend my motion to limit it to six cars.
No, he took it out.
I waffled because I wasn't sure where it was. It wasn't in the recommendation. We don't usually refer to cars, but I think it came up because they proposed something in the House rules. But based on the conversation that took place, it would seem that six would be plenty for six, for not more than six people. So to invite more than six seems to be inviting more than six. To invite more than six cars seems to be inviting more than six people.
Right.
Absolutely.
How's your man?
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Thank you.
I have one last question for the applicant. Did you hear back from your neighbors?
We heard, so we, nobody was home when we knocked. And so we left letters, and we heard from the Marsanowskis, who are, you pass their driveway right before our driveway, so we have a shared border with them. He sent a lovely email on behalf of him and his wife, welcoming us and saying, you know, let us know if there's anything we can do. Sounds like a great plan. And then Dave and Tamar ran into Travis, and he was like, it's your property, do what you want with it, and told us what to do if the baby calves come across, which happens sometimes, and we're just supposed to talk loudly at them and/or call him, and they will go home, apparently. And so those, so we heard from two of the four neighbors that we reached out to. Sure, thank you.
All right, then, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of sending this to the board of supervisors with a recommendation for approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. You all are welcome to stay, or we will see you at the June Board Supervisors meeting if you're so inclined. All right. Takes us on to the second special exception for the evening, the Ragged Ridge LLC Tourist Home. Ms. Thorz, if you could introduce this, please.
Thank you. Again, special exception 24-02 Ragged Ridge LLC. Owners of tax map parcels 54-16, 54-17, and 54-8. A combined total of 68 acres of property. It's located at Nine Pio Mill's Road. It's zoned agricultural. They wish to use the existing house as a three-bedroom tourist home. The Health Department commented that their records indicated that the property's septic system was updated in '08. The home was listed as a three-bedroom with six-person occupancy with a 450-gallon per-day estimate rate and a use of a 100-gallon septic tank. A well construction permit was received on March 19th of this year and is currently under review. The Health Department recommended the use of the property as a tourist home contingent upon the installation of the new well. And if this well has a potable adequate daily flow to support the 450-gallon per-day requirement for occupancy, VDOT did not have any objections. Staff would recommend a maximum of three bedrooms, six guests, so food service can be offered. The permit was terminated upon sale or transfer of the property. The property cannot be subleased from it by their party or use of the time share, and that the applicants must comply with the Health Department comments in their memorandum dated March 20th.
Thank you, Michelle.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I point out one, one error on the, on the septic field again? You can't flow 450 gallons a day through a 100-gallon septic tank. You left off at zero.
I was in.
No, I was there.
All right. The applicants are present. If you'd like to say anything at this time, you're welcome to do so.
First of all, my name is Trevor Thraves. My wife is a member of Ragged Ridge LLC. They asked me to do the speaking. My brother-in-law, Andy Berry, his wife is the other member of the LLC. He's here as well. The property's a historic property, in my estimate. It's been in the Galleyhugh family. Was in the Galleyhugh family for almost 100 years, I think. Therein is kind of where I think the, how it's put together as it is in the different parcels and the different sizes that don't necessarily meet the current zoning. I understand that the 10-acre requirement is there, but these, these parcels have been in place for a long time. There is a lot of acreage around it. We've had positive interactions with all of our neighbors. Everybody seems very excited to see activity on the property. That has, for reference, it's been in the family a really long time. Was, been left empty for about 15 years. The entire property was used somewhat for some cattle and that kind of thing. Right now, we're in the process of repairing fences and that kind of thing to bring it back into some cattle usage, as well as renovating the house and doing the best to keep its historic nature. It was built in the 1920s. It's a beautiful trim inside, you know. Trying to preserve as much of that character that exists from that construction. Trying to preserve the property as a whole is the main goal of the entire family, family-operated LLC. And a part of our planning is hoping that the use of this house as a tourist home will allow us to do what we would like to do in the preservation of the entire property, allowing, making that feasible for us financially. Outside of that, I'll, you know, happy to answer any questions at all.
That's great, thank you very much.
Could I, could I ask one right off the bat? As I drove by there, it looks like there's the old house and the newer house. Which one are we talking about for the actual Airbnb?
Ah, yes, the older house is the property we're talking about. The newer house is on a very, like a one-acre lot that is an adjacent property.
Completely separate. And, and the box, it looked like the mailbox had six pail of.
That is, if you, the map in the, the, the plat in the, the application might shed a light, like I said, it's configured a little funny. We actually had to go through the process of having the previous plat updated, that there was a mistake in the survey that didn't show. There was a family division of the property across the road at one point. There's an easement that goes from the road back to the portion which is called the Old Mill Property. And that is the address that you're, the mailbox you're referring to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. If no one has anything else at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on the Ragged Ridge LLC Tourist Home. If you have any comments on this application, please come to the microphone and address the commission at this time. If there's no one here to speak on this application as well, I'll go ahead and turn over to the fellow commissioners for their comments. Mr. Sisk, did you want to go first, since this is in Piedmont District?
Actually, I'd prefer to go by him.
Okay.
What's the situation now with the well?
If you look at the map there, you've got the two small lots outlined, 3.46 acres and 3.74. That's based on the, across on the south side of P. O. Mills, or P. O. Mills Road. That's actually a smaller lot, like we were just discussing, the house that was submitted. The well that services the house that we're talking about using is on the other side of the road. It's an old springhouse system. We, it's actually not even running into the springhouse anymore. So, we're having a new well put in. The application submitted, my understanding is that that process is a bit slow due to some retirement recently in that office maybe. So, we're hoping to get that as soon as possible. And I will say, there are springs all over the property, so much so that we're trying to mitigate, you know, with cattle watering and stuff like that, there shouldn't be a problem with getting enough water for the property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, so, sorry, I'm just kind of catching up a bit. If there's no well, what's the deal with the septic?
It's an interesting one, the pictures.
And what's the deal with the septic? The septic was updated in 2008.
So, it has a septic that?
Yeah, an engineered septic system. And basically, it was done right before the lady that lived there passed away, and then it's been unused for the two years.
Great.
Will you be drilling a new well?
Yes, sir.
That has not been completed yet.
Right, we're waiting on it. There are currently three watering systems up there, all of them tapping into springs. We're only using one of them. But it's all within that 3.46 acres that those springs come to the surface. They'll tell us where it is well. There's a lot of groundwater there. Obviously, the river's right there.
Renovations. You know, we're, I think, scheduled in sometime in the late summer to have that completed. And we wouldn't be doing anything until then, obviously.
Where's your parking going to be located?
Sure, it's hard to see there, but the house is the, the reddish shape you can see closest to the road. There's another garage, which is back a little bit further to the right there, along the right-hand side. That hole, there's a gravel driveway leading to that garage, as well as a small outlet space. If, if there's, yeah, there's some pictures showing it. That's the access from P. O. There's the driveway, there's the garage. And then you can see, kind of in front of the garage, we've got some gravel set there, but there's a space cut out there for parking as well. In that, you can see we've already started, you know, cleaning up the landscape, trying to bring that, this really cool property back to life. I mean, the stone wall itself is just beautiful. And, yeah, we're looking forward to having the whole property just brought back to where it was when it was, kind of just left alone.
I guess I have another question for Ms. Summers. Could we get an interpretation? It seems that we're, I know there's a 10-acre minimum for parcels for, I believe there is for tourist homes in Ag. So, this seems like it would require?
So, that's all retarded to all three parcels?
We've done this before.
Yes.
So, how does that stay? So, we have to, we would make that part of the condition in some way, that you couldn't separate it. If you continue down this and sold the others, then the tourist home would have to go away. Is that, is that part of what we would?
Right.
Is that what it means to tie it to the whole?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So, if it's tied to all three parcels and they sell one, then the permit would become void?
Okay.
No, it wouldn't. If they, they only become void if they sold the 65. They can sell the one acre and still be viable.
Then it wouldn't be adjacent.
So, basically, an acre each sale would have to result in a residue greater than 10 acres.
Keeping it, keeping it. So, I mean, I think.
Well, we can add that as part of the condition.
To me, that's kind of like the well. I would think we would want to ensure that as part of any approval, if that's our working assumption.
And again, that part, the well part is in, in the condition, built in the condition that they would have to comply with that before the permit would even be issued.
Thank you for that.
That was my biggest concern with the well. And, I mean, I guess you, you want to get, you're wanting to get this in under the anticipated two-year, or, yeah, that wouldn't apply to you because you, it's been in the family, correct? Or would it?
Yes, it would.
Okay. So, I mean, every, I'm good with everything except for, well, like Mr. Light said, we'd almost have to wait to get the results of the well, shouldn't be an issue. And then, once they sign off the water's good and everything else, then I think it could go forward.
Sure, and I think we could definitely be open to a conditional, that being a condition of the approval of.
Yeah.
That's typically what we would do. I think our approval, our recommendation of approval would be condition on that, that well being established. I mean, I think that's a pretty typical course that we would take.
That would be my preference for how to handle it, is, you know, the issuance of the permit would be contingent on a well that meets the requirements of the Health Department report, which I think Michelle summed that up pretty well in her staff report as well.
It's supposed to be two-year deal that we're talking about? He's already, he's got his application in.
This is just like the last one. This is just like the last one. He's grandfathered.
That's exactly.
He's got his two-years. He's got his application in.
So, if everyone, I mean, if everyone else is, there's some.
Well, my question comes down to the, the permit terminated upon sale or transfer of the property. Ragged Ridge could own this thing forever in perpetuity. I could buy Ragged Ridge from them tomorrow. Property didn't transfer out of Ragged Ridge.
Well, I think that's, that's, that has to do with the way LLCs own property, not the way we approve properties for uses. So, to me, as long, I think you're right, as long as this owner who's applying owns this configuration of land, we would continue to be okay with it.
Well, we'd know otherwise unless we're digging into the.
Well, but that, oh, okay.
The Richmond to find out change of ownership.
All right, well, I'm responding only to the point about the 10 acres, because that is kind of tied to a common ownership. So, that, but that part would not be affected by the LLC. You're raising, I think, a different point, which is, for any of these that are owned by an LLC and we can make them condition on transfer, it's really not preventing the transfer of the LLC.
What did we do with the LLC up in Chester Gap that applied for one? Did we have any conditions on that permit?
The one I didn't like?
It was, all I remember was it was.
That was the single girl from DC that bought their coat?
Yes, I don't think we had any conditions on that.
Disregarding entity in her case.
What's that?
Disregarding entity in her case.
The what?
Disregarding entity.
Yeah, what's that?
I've never heard of that.
Must be a tax term.
It's a tax name.
Hey, Brian, if it's any consolation to you, I think I've been immersed in real estate and I panic since 1980. And I only know of one case where a property was transferred from one owner to the next by an LLC that was never recorded. And, you know, so, that don't happen too often out here on properties.
We're just bringing it up.
That's a good point.
And I'll reiterate, it's a family-owned LLC. This is going to be a family property if it was to be sold, the LLC.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, maybe, for the board. So, your, I think your document with Richmond basically lists the managing partner, managing, and that's the only ownerships listed in that document, I believe.
Managing partner, and there's two members. The document may not list it, but there's two members.
So, usually, like, we have treated like somebody dies and inherits a property, that that use continues to with that person. So, you have a situation here where what would happen if one of the members passed and then they dissolved the LLC and the remaining two members kept it? Would we allow that Airbnb to continue?
I think that's consistent with our usual approach to within the family.
Well, if we have a conversation like that as part of the record, it was our indication to do that. But you never know, 10 years from now, you may have different neighbors and they may take a different viewpoint. It's if LLC no longer exists, you know, what, you know, there was no intent to allow the remaining members to still operate. So, you know, I don't, as long as, if you got an entity of three people is what you're telling me that are the LLC?
It's two members and one, one of them is a managing member. So, my wife here is the managing member, and then her sister is the other member. Those are the, there's two people and one of them's the manager.
So, I mean, we can allow that them, if one dies, we'll let the other continue to do this, right? No? When we get to a motion, we ought to just say a couple of things.
Marty, Sam.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the board supervisors of this application, subject to the applicant obtaining a portable water sample approval by the Health Department prior to the occupancy of the property. And that the entity could consist of two sisters today, and the sisters are named.
Lee Thraves and Liz Elizabeth Bailey.
Okay. Are the two members of the Ragged Ridge LLC in the event that one member, if one person becomes incapacitated to cease to no longer partner, for whatever reason, that the other member can continue to own the property in the LLC or outside the LLC. However, if they sell the property, the permit terminates. How was that stuff?
Wow, that was.
All the property are just the 65 acres.
And the conclusion to the motion is that any sale or transfer of the property would have to leave in excess of 10 acres or more for the permit to remain valid.
Perfect. Thank you, Al. You have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tommy. I would just like to say that it's nice to see this property come back into use. Whenever I drive through there and, you know, or anytime I see houses that have been, that look abandoned and are falling out of use, especially a beautiful home, it's a shame when you know how beautiful it could be. And it's so nice to see it receiving a lot of care. You all obviously have a lot going on. When I was out there on Sunday, I didn't want to pull in the driveway and get a nail in my tire. So, I just think it's great to see an old home come back to life. And I hope folks enjoyed all the hard work you put into it.
No, the house I bought had, or live in, hadn't been lived in in 30 years, and so I feel, you know, it's a, it's a hall.
It's a lot of work. A lot of work. Thank you so much. So, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. You all are also welcome to stay, or we will see you at the board supervisors in June. All right. Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, that takes us to the last special exception on the agenda this evening, the Delmar, am I pronouncing that right? The Delmar tourist home, special exception 24-03-03. Michelle, if you would mind to introduce that, please.
Thank you. This property is identified by Taxman Number 2-14E. It's located at 16 Little Way in the Wakefield District. Of size of the property is 22 acres and it is zoned agricultural. The applicant wishes to use the existing home as a four-bedroom tourist home. The Health Department commented that the subject records indicate the property has a permit to operate a sewage disposal system with a capacity of 600 gallons per day, which is four bedrooms, eight-person occupancy with a 1,200-gallon septic tank. The tank was recently pumped back in March, and the well has a seven-gallon per minute yield, and V-DOT had no objection to the request. Staff would recommend conditions for a maximum of four bedrooms, eight guests, no food service could be offered to the renters, that the permit would terminate upon sale, transfer of the property, and the property may not be subleased, rent about their required years of timeshare.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Did you want to say anything before we have the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. And congratulations, not many people pronounce my name right the first time. So, this home is, we've, my wife and I have owned it for, I don't know, 12, 13 years, and we've used it as part of our winery vineyard business next door. For many years, I had my vineyard manager, and then later my winemaker who lived in the property. And I don't have anybody live in it anymore, but it's so part of our operation that it's very difficult to go out and rent. We just won't do it because it's right in the center of everything that we do there. We're farming the vineyard right around it, you know, parking it around it for the winery. And so, this seems like a perfect use for it, especially in light of the people who would like to use it or the people who are coming through our front door already. So, I have one question. This may just be my ignorance, but the, for the fact that the permit expires upon transfer of the property, I'm wondering how, if there's any flexibility with that, because as my wife and I are growing in years, we're starting to do our estate planning and so forth, and the property, we may want to transfer to our kids, we may want to transfer it to our business entity, and not like to have to come back through another six-month process in the future. So, I don't know what the flexibility is in the sale and transfer. I think I heard a comment earlier that you generally allow it within the family. I'm wondering if that can be stretched to within the family or within the family businesses or something of that nature. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
It sounds good. We'll see how, see if anything should come up. I appreciate that very much. All right, so, without further ado, I'll go ahead and open the special exception 24-03-03, Delmar tourist home, public hearing. If anyone would like to make any comments on this application, please come to the microphone. All right. Now, if there's no one here to speak on this application, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. This is in the Wakefield District. Mr. Shuland, if you would like to go first?
Except for says 502.
I'm so sorry.
This is voting district, 502.
Yeah, that's, 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 you know, the flintel. Yeah, that's, 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 that's this, you know, the flintial part.
This is something most would regret to add, Michelle. This is voting district 10. Can we provide them a little clarity with what we're asking for? It never showed up so glaringly before to me, that we're asking for magistrate district. And I just want to check with Al that the accepted numbers for math works good.
Everything is divisible by two.
I found it interesting that he, Mr. Delmar said that his winemaker used to live there and other people, farm managers and stuff, because that's exactly what we had with Narmada.
Yeah.
They just wanted to take their little place and turn, I don't see much difference, except that this seems nicer and more private than what they were providing.
Yeah.
Which surprises four bedrooms in that place. I really don't have any objections to this application whatsoever. We can discuss the termination part later, I think.
That sounds good stuff. Did you have anything?
No, I drove by there. The, you know, you're right. It's, it's right there. Seems like the best thing is for somebody who's either involved in the business or wants to engage in the business in some way or another, so.
I didn't go there today. I've been there tomorrow too, so. But no, I, I don't have any issues other than what Mr. Shuland pointed out about the, the family, the normal transition, but the, the business piece I do have a question about.
Tommy, do you have anything?
I think it's in a, a good location. I think it's a good fit and I think it would be a benefit to our county. I don't see the way, way it's situated, located, cannot disturb anyone, but maybe the cattle. And the cattle have no, they're not, didn't show up to accept.
That's because she talked loud to them.
I, I didn't make it out for an onsite visit, but based on the application, I didn't have any questions or concerns.
None here.
All right. Al?
Two things. I think, I think the use is, is exceptional. You should have tremendous results here with, with it in connection with your winery next door. In terms of the agritourism, do you, do, I've never been to one. Do you do weddings over there at the, next door?
No.
You just do the, the wine and alcohol and, and some food, I think that's, there wouldn't be any outside events that would potentially cross the line. Do you do any parking over on this 22 acres for the winery?
I'm sorry?
Do you do any parking on this 22 acres for the wine?
It's our overflow park.
Overflow park? And that's all a grass area?
No, we just widen the driveway going to the house and grapple it and park it jakes into the driveway. You can see the star is there if you look immediately up to the tree line. At the bottom of that fingered block, there's also a gravel and area, station area for equipment, but we also use it for overflow parking. We have our, our big bay.
And the, all the water disposal wells and everything for the vineyards is, is across Little Way Lane. It's all over there. And whatever, your well's separate for this property, it's over 22 acres.
Completely separate.
Yeah, completely separate, okay. I guess the only question I have is if, if Little Way is, is not a type 2 road, how do we get around that?
I think it says it is in the application.
It does mean...
And Little Way is a private lane that does meet the type 2 road standards.
Not in some place in that line. Yeah. Oh, great, we're fine. Fantastic.
We're on a roll.
That's all right. I've only done that two or three times this week.
Yeah. So I think it's fine. It's a great use and should be very successful.
Sounds like we're all in accord then.
Can, can we, can we talk about the...
The ownership?
My opinion is that as long as there are substantial, as long as a substantial number of shareholders, if you got, is this incorporated, you got stock, it's not an LLC, I guess I should go to the podium.
We, we have this very complicated structure. The land is actually owned by an LLC that my family owns. The business is owned by a corporation and rents it from, right hand, rents it from the left hand, but they're both family entities. We, we have one non-family member as a, as a partner, minority partner.
You say family members, they're, they're all children?
Yes, my wife and children and I, right.
So when you contemplate the transfer, are you contemplating it to the, the family-owned LLC?
Well, I'm not sure. We haven't worked that out yet. It would, it would most likely either be to the family-owned LLC or because that LLC has a minority partner that's not family, we might start a new LLC that is just family, since this is held out and my wife and I is my name at the moment. So it, it's just kind of up in the air and, and I don't see that happening in the next six to 12 months, but I see it happening in the next couple of years. And again, we like to avoid coming back to the well again, so to speak.
I think for precedence going forward, it should be nobody other than pure family members. So that a minority or a fractional owner, you could argue that if it's 1% today, somebody else could come in tomorrow and say, okay, I got what I want to do, but the minority is 30% or 40%. So I think we need to keep it pure and just have family members. It's my recommendation for him to accommodate a future transfer.
Well, that would preclude me from today transferring it into my, the...
Entity with the minority owner?
Yeah, which, you know, here, the problem for us is, is that we bought this property separately, much later after we started the winery. My wife and I thought we were going to move into it, so we bought it in our name. It's just become so integral to the operation of the whole vineyard and winery that it's begging to be kind of put together with that. And so I, I'm just, you know, I'm tugging, it's a little bit of a tug of war at the moment because there's one side of me that says, well, I'd kind of like to keep it all in the family, but the other side is, is that this really belongs in the business because the business actually rents it from me right now because they operate the vineyards and they've always, we've always had an employee in the house. And so we would continue that. I won't be actually, I won't be personally operating the tourist rental. My business will be operating it as, as the tenant on the property.
I guess my view of that is to the point about precedent. I mean, I think one could make a reasonable argument that this is integrated to the operation, but that would be pretty different from anything we've done so far. And to limit the sort of continuity to direct family only requires that any new configuration would come back. And yes, it, you know, I can see why you would prefer not to have whoever...
Is there any expedited process?
Well, the fact that you've been through it before.
I'll tell you one you could do. You could, you could postpone our, you could postpone our decision tonight and come back with the other entity on the application.
Well, like, as I said earlier, that could be...
Then you wouldn't have to go through it again.
I know, but it could be a year or two before I've got that worked out.
Then you're ahead of schedule.
I need to get it rented. It's, it's been sitting empty. We need to, other than family and friends staying in it, we, we need to get it up and going, so that wouldn't be a good option for us. I understand what you're saying, but if I was ready to do it tomorrow, I'd say, yeah, that makes perfect sense, but I'm just not there yet.
There's some other things at room right now in the county that's not public knowledge that a parallel with this thing here that comes about. It's going to be a movement, a type of activity with minority owners into ag land, so I think it's something we overconsciously.
That was intriguing. Okay. Well, I, I tend to agree with you and I think we're giving you some of what you want for some of your scenarios. We're just not able to do it for all of them.
Well, and I think, I mean, we make a recommendation and the ultimate decision is that the board supervisors and just as this just came to light this evening, between now and the board's decision, it does give us some time to take into consideration of what the options are at our disposal.
Okay.
To best accommodate your needs and also make sure we have the right decision in place for, for future applications.
Great.
The POS may be more easily influenced than we are.
Okay. Well, all you can do is ask, right? Well, thank you for your time.
All right. So do we, do we have a motion? Brian, did you care to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we recommend this application for approval just as it is with the property owners, as they are the same terms that Michelle left.
All right. We have a motion.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. The conditions don't include the family, family sale or transfer. Did we want to include that?
So it would be transferred outside the family?
Right. It would make condition number three, this permit terminates upon the sale or transfer of this property outside of family members?
I still second that.
Are you all right with that? Because that makes it, keeps it to family, but not...
You can create an LLC that just has its family members and that's...
Then the problem solved. And if the board wants to take other considerations, thank you. Sounds like you're agreeable and you're agreeable to that friendly amendment. And so is there any further discussion? All right. If there's no further discussion, everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a nice evening. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I'll see you in June. Thanks so much. All right. That takes us to the public comment portion of the evening. Anyone that would like to make a comment at this time is welcome to come to the microphone and address their comments to the commission. Seeing that there's no one wishing to speak. Are you sure?
This is a learning session.
Going twice? Public comment, I'll then close public comment. We have no old business. We have no new business. Just so everyone's aware, I, I did take our discussion points on the ordinance changes to the board supervisors and we are planning to have a work session to make sure we are all on the right track and the same page in regards to those important details. And so I did not add them to this agenda, also anticipating that we might have a turnout for tourist homes like we did last month. But we didn't, so that's great. And then we have our list of future ordinance amendments discussion. Anyone have anything to add?
So, Madam Chairman, it's, it's nice to point out that there's been this discussion in the past about making the Airbnb process a kind of administrative process. And I think the difference between last month and this month shows that the same regulations don't apply to all the communities in Rapid Hennig. So it shows that it's good to have some public input in our public hearing.
Yes. It was, it was a very, very instructive exercise last month. Thank you, Al. If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Gary. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steph. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.